For, I mean, we need to prepare, the essence of the Common Core is to prepare our students for college and careers. And technology is a big part of that. And there's, integrated into all the standards is a technology component. And so what we did was we formed a committee to prepare ourselves for this technology implementation. We called it the Common Core Implementation Advisory Committee, and it was focused, as I said, on technology. We had 25 teachers, administrators, classified staff, and parent representatives. And they represented every school site, and we met five times from October through February. And our purpose was to basically gather input from the schools, research best practices on the effective use of technology to improve teaching and learning, and then to develop recommendations for expenditures of the funds, short and long-term funds. And so, and I'll talk about the funding in a moment. But some of the highlights of the recommendations, there's five recommendations, basically, divided into five areas. There is the defining, the baseline technology, what is our standard that we're going to have at every school? And so basically, we want to get down to a three-to-one student-to-computer ratio, and then a one-to-one for teacher-to-computer, for the teacher device, as well as LCD projector, dock cameras, and all the peripherals. For which device, we wanted to identify a standard device so that our tech department was not overwhelmed, so that we can address any technical issues, and then also have a common platform for everyone. And so what this committee, basically looking at all these different devices, we came to the conclusion that having the Chromebooks was, for now, was, you know, the device to use. And then we also were looking at mainly for second through eighth grade for the Chromebooks. And then we said, okay, what about our special day class students? Is that appropriate for them? What about our preschool, TKK, first grade? And so we played with, you know, iPads, Chromebooks, but we're still trying to figure that out. And so what we'll do is we'll have phases of deployment, how these devices are going to be rolled out. Right now, we need some books for some school, uh, books. We need some computers, devices for school sites to do the field tests, and so we're, we need to get some devices out quickly. And then we're also going to roll out devices to all the school sites, starting in the summer. That's the recommendation, for second through eighth grade. And we, like I said, want to get down to a three-to-one student-to-computer ratio. So that's basically four to five devices in every classroom, and then a laptop cart of 40 for the school site. And then in 15, 16, we're going to then roll out the preschool through first-grade devices. So we'll do it in phases. And what we're going to do next year is, the recommendation is to have kind of a group that is going to determine what would be the best device for the primary grades. And so what we're going to need, if we're going to roll out all these devices, is we need initial and ongoing professional development. And so we need someone to do that professional development. We want someone in-house. And so we are recommending that we have a teacher on special assignment or a resource teacher that is focused on technology integration. They would be out of the classroom. And then they would have a team of teachers from school sites that are in the classroom that would be, you know, paid on a stipend to help decide and make these decisions with our departments as well, to make sure it's integrated into all the curricular areas. And then, and then provide that professional development onsite. And then we also, in order to keep everything running, we need ongoing technical support. So we need to expand our computer technicians. We need to, our network infrastructure needs to be supported and expanded because it's going to be overwhelmed with all of the devices. So we need to really grow that. And then we also need to think about the future and upgrades as we go. So, oh, and then also considering, do we need a help desk to help? So is that something we're going to look at for the future? But that's a recommendation. That's something we need to consider. So for the funding for all of this, we did receive one-time funds called Common Core Implementation Funds. And so those need to be spent, I believe, by 2015, June of 2015. And there, you have to spend them on certain areas, professional development, technology, and instructional materials. And I'll show you how we are proposing to spend that. And then also, you know, there's things that need ongoing support. And so I mentioned this in the LCAP presentation last meeting, and when I present it again in May, you'll see it. This is a recommendation that we need to make sure we always have replacement funds so that we can keep our technology fresh and have devices always available. One of the things is that we're looking at the swap and fix model, where if a device breaks, that the teacher or the student doesn't have to wait two weeks for it to be fixed, that there would be a loaner that is sent to the school site so that while it's being fixed, they still have a device. So we have kind of a supply of loaners for them to send out. And then we need ongoing site funds to make sure that they are able to keep up with, you know, if an LCD projector, the lamp dies, you want to just get a new LCD projector. So they need to have funds for that, too. And then, as I mentioned, just the infrastructure. We need to make sure that, you know, when we have to expand that network every couple of year, or every eight to 10 years, that we have the funds available for that. So those are more ongoing. So what we're proposing, this is for, in order to spend the funds, we do need board approval on this one-time implementation funds, which we'll come back to in April. But we received 1.2 million and change. And so what we're recommending in this proposal is that the bulk of it will go towards technology. And then that includes the purchases we had to make for this field, we need to make for this field test. And then also for professional development, the technology, as well as, you know, our maths. Some are in service that we're needing to provide. So we're actually going to go through these funds very quickly with all of the technology needs and professional development. And then, as I mentioned, that we have our stipend teachers that would be ongoing professional development support. So that would be for their one-year stipend. And so that basically takes care of those one-time funds. And so that's what we would need approval for at the next meeting. And so, you have a question?
Yeah, how many of those teachers on special assignments is that for?
One per school site, so 14.
Four, and then?
Oh, no, sorry. Teacher on special assignment would be one.
One, yeah.
But then the teachers that are onsite that are teaching, that would be support, that would be one per school site. But they'd be in the classroom.
So that 16,000 is for that one teacher and those other?
That's just for the teachers that are at the school sites.
All right. So is there something separate for?
Since that is, and that is something that we want to consider as ongoing, this is not, that would not come out of, that would come out of the LCAP. That's what we're recommending, as opposed to coming out of this one time that needs to be spent in one year.
All right. And another question I had was, is any of that professional development money for that position as well? Are they going to receive some extra training for?
That could come out of there as well, yeah.
Could, but are, I mean, what are the plans for that?
Well, it, we would take it out of there, but we also, if we're going to need professional development after these funds are completed. So that would be part of the LCAP.
All right.
CFF funds.
All right.
And we're, we're including that as we're working on the LCAP. We're thinking of that, too. But this is just, we do need, in order to spend these funds, we need to make sure that we have a budget and a plan. And so as I said, we are already, you know, in our proposal, these, this is
That's in there?
Not even enough compared to what we need to spend.
Right.
So we're going to have to use the LCAP to cover the rest of the devices and the professional development. So this will just cover a portion of it.
So this is the, excuse me, this is the money that's, that's being given to us to spend?
Yeah.
Okay. Does it make sure that we're following that?
Sorry.
So that's good. That's good.
I guess just to, just to echo on Mr. Ali's questioning about where it's being spent, is maybe for the next meeting, just, was it still possible to have a little bit more granularity on these buckets of, of funds that we're spending? For example, where, where the professional development is going, or how that's broken out?
Right. It's mainly for the stipends for teachers. That would be the cost of the professional development.
And I guess what, what about like the 850,000 in technology purchases?
That's device, that's actually in the plan, in the backup documents.
Okay, got it, got it.
It delineates how much it costs per device, and that's where that 850,000 came from.
Got it. Okay.
Have you been following any of the news and the feedback that the legislators are getting? The 1.2 million that we've gotten, or 1.2 billion that the state put aside for Common Core implementation, it's really probably about 10% of what will be needed to make a full conversion to Common Core in all the different places. And so Ms. McCullic is only letting you know how we're going to spend these 1.2 million, but there are ongoing costs that are included in our LCAP that will help, that we have a priority, a state priority area of Common Core state standards. We'll include those in there, as well as our budget for some of those replacement costs. And hopefully, the governor and legislators will see fit to fully fund the conversion to Common Core instead of just 10%.
Since we're going with Chromebooks, they're only, what, 150 each, or something like that?
I think they're 250.
250?
To 300, but then?
We're going as low as we can.
We, well, we want devices that are easy for students to use.
Yeah.
They're also, we had to make sure that they are compatible with the Smarter Balance Assessment System, as well as the needs of functionality for what we need for a Common Core implementation, integration. So a lot of districts, actually, right now, a lot of districts are going with Chromebooks.
Yeah. That's a good choice.
So next steps, we recommend that you accept the report from the Common Core Implementation Advisory Committee. And then at the April 23 governing board meeting, we'll ask for approval for these funds I just shared. And then once it's approved, then we will recruit the recommended staffing that's in this report, as well as determine procedures for deploying the devices and inventory.
So, well, earlier when they said, mark for action, we don't take action.
Right.
We are taking action on the plan only. Is that it?
Yeah, you're accepting it.
We're accepting the, okay. So?
Possibly, no.
So?
We hope.
Yeah, we realized that we needed a gap between.
So actually, what we're doing here is, is not taking knife, but splitting that into two. We will take action on accepting the report, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So can I make a motion then that we accept the recommendation of the Common Core Technology Implementation Plan? And that's it, as presented.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
In opposition, that was unanimous.
It's hard not to say "and" for so much money, because usually we approve it with the money, you know?
Right. And I thank, thank you and all of those members of the team for the amount of work that went into that. I actually found the plan surprisingly fascinating to read. Everyone got it covered. Okay. Okay. Am I missing anything? Those were our all-star. Section four, certificated personnel, we have retirements again. So we have retirements from, do you want to speak on that at all, or should we just go ahead and?
Well, a couple teachers have been in our district quite a while. Ellen Savage Cafaretta has taught math at Polocita, and Mr. Jeffrey Caldwell, language arts, English language arts teacher, and they're retiring at the end of the school year. Ms. Cafaretta has been with us since 1974, and Mr. Caldwell since 2002. So they're been with us for a long time, and we need to commend them for all those years of service and wish them well.
Okay, I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around the idea that somebody has been teaching in our district since I was in the sixth grade.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion that we accept the retirement request from Ellen Savage Cafaretta, effective June the 7th, 2014, and Jeffrey Caldwell, effective June 7th, 2014. And that appropriate resolutions be prepared to commend them for their many years of service.
I'll second that and wish them all the best in retirement. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Well, they will be pleased to know that their retirements have been unanimously approved.
Wow, Ms. Savage was one of my teachers at Polocita. I still call her Ms. Savage. Interesting note here, she started on the day I was born, after 1974.
Just make them feel good, right?
A lot of birthdays. That's a good thing.
Just wait until you reach that part when someone tells you.
Well, I'm thinking that that means that that date was a good date for our district.
That's excellent.
Okay. On that note, item three, the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, 2014-15.
So this, we're asked each year to kind of guess how many people we may need to hire who aren't, don't have every aspect of their credential totally completed. And so we need to do an estimate of numbers. And a lot of times, sometimes we hire people from out of state who haven't, who need to do a little more for their California credential. It could be the English language learner portion of it. Sometimes special education, someone may need their autism certificate. Even a multiple subjects teacher may not have passed one of the exams, that reading exam that's put off to the end. And so while they're working on that, we can get emergency permits and waivers for people. So our estimates are, we may need one multiple subject permit. Single subjects, maybe four. Special education, maybe four. And then as far as English learner credential, maybe four people needing that. One resource specialist possibly, and then like our library services person may need to keep working on her specialty.
So, 12, 15?
Okay, so can?
All 15 people.
Right.
Possibly.
Position, probably at the most.
So this is, this is like our, our guess at a worst-case scenario, as it were.
Right.
So could we have a motion to approve the declaration certifying there may be an insufficient number of certificated persons?
Sounds like you almost made the motion. I'll make the motion to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2014, 2015, as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That was unanimous. Okay, that brings us to our board policies, section six. Item one, the Board Policies ARs, August 2013 revisions, first reading. Is there any input discussion or?
As I read through the, excited to read the policies, I will, I have nothing to change on my side. And I motioned to accept the first reading.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the first reading has been accepted. Okay. So at this point, we have reports from board members on professional development. So Mr. Otidy, are you set to go first?
I am set to go first, and I am, I am pleased to report that it was local, so we didn't have to spend any money on lodging, and also that it was quite eye-opening. There were two modules that I attended. The gov, first, the governance, which is a course that everyone has to take before they graduate to the next levels. But the second one, which was the finance, the school finance course, was actually quite, quite more rigorous and quite more informative. I'm happy to say I was with Mr. Waters there at the, at the first part. And it is pretty much the same that we had in our local, when we had the, the meeting at our, at the school district. It just basically reviewed planning, working together, jobs, our jobs, the superintendent's job, and administration, and our outreach to the community. It was pretty much a reiteration of that. But what I do want to talk about is school finance. One, coming from an investment banking background, it was, it's always been interesting as I compared how we do our budget versus how the general accounting principles are done, or how Wall Street does its, its budgeting for finance for, for companies. If you look at our company, we are basically a $45 million company with a staff of how many? And our constituents are the, are the students, teachers, and parents of, of our community. Our shareholders are the taxpayers. And, and how we communicate this information business-wise, and how we communicate this information on what our state has developed, which is called the standardized accounting code structure, SACC. So in the, in the world of government funding and taxes and grants, and there's standardized accounting code structures. In the world of finance, in the world of business, there's the general accounting principles, right, GAAP. So that's how you compare companies or things of that sort. They're not always aligned. So it's, it's, you have to understand how to read both to kind of understand what's going on. But what I did learn is that School Services, School Services of California did do, did apply some Wall Street-type analytics to different school districts in our state, which is basically a comp sheet. And if possible, if possible, I didn't, I don't have a copy for everyone because they only had one copy, but if I can make a copy for, for our district and also the, our school district members. The reason being is that this is, this is an interesting piece to read because it compares our different districts, basically how many students there are, what the salaries are going, what staff that they have, and compares it to the other districts in the state. Now, what's important with that? It kind of gives, tries to give an apples-to-apples comparison on how we do or how we rank versus the other schools in the district. That'll be important for not only us now, but also for the future members as they stay on, on the board and compare what these numbers are versus what we're spending, or how much money we're getting, or what our ADA is. And that's it. The second thing I did like, we did talk about, that was, that was actually the, that's the part that I liked, the numbers part. At the meeting, they gave a history of school finance, why there's these different laws, and, and the conundrum that we are in today, and how we plan to go into the future. But basically, give us a historical background on what was going on. But what was interesting is the backwards timeline. And I think what's, what's interesting about this is that they have a little bit more granularity on what, how we interact with our administration, and it also had how we update the community on how we're spending taxpayer money. I think it, it was a, it was a nice template, and we have most of the pieces there. And also want to make a copy for our, our board and our district regarding the fiscal calendar. And Ms. Kessler, you've done a great job on pretty much following the, the template. But I think it's important, not only for, for now, but also for the future. Because as you know, like all families, you know, without money, we can't really get anything done, right? Let's see. Other than that, that was actually pretty much the two key, key takeaways I have from the, from the, from the conference. It was a half-day conference. Half of it was talking about historicals regarding school finance. The other half was discussing the granularity of the standardized accounting code structures and our role in giving the big picture, and staff's role of coming down to the granularity and us approving. One of the, also the interesting things that we talked about was each year, we come for certification of the budget, right? And I think Ms. Kessler and her team does a great job. Here's what's interesting, the, the nomenclature used is kind of, kind of confusing. There's, there's three types of certification, positive, qualified, and negative. So positive is that we are, it's budget, it's, we, we have enough funding to do what we said we were going to do. Qualified, we're a little bit below, so we're going to have to look, look around that we may be, we may be qualified for more funds. And then negative is that we are way off from our budget, and we need to do some, some work, being a little bit more granular. But basically, that's, that's our certification every time Ms. Kessler comes, comes up and gives us a, gives us a report. And, and once again, you have been very, very thorough and very informative and given us a lot of the background information on the, on the budget, so thank you very much. Other than that, I will be happy to answer any questions, and also I'll be able, available for more questions once these, these documents are distributed to the board.
I just have one question. So the document, is this, I think I've received something like this before where it compares us all the districts in our county, correct? And then you're able, well, not all of them, because I don't think they survey all the districts, but were you able to glean any comparison as far as other districts that were similar to ours and how we were doing in that regard?
Yes and no. The hard part is that, for some odd reason, we weren't in that list.
Oh, yes, they don't always have every district in there. We were in the, the time that I went, we were in there.
So for some odd reason, we were in there. I looked for it. But I think what's interesting is that what we could glean from it is that we could look at districts with the same amount of students, or the same amount of budget, or basically the same size, and we could say, okay, here is a benchmark of how this, these districts are performing.
But since we weren't in there, you weren't?
Yeah, so there's going to be a little bit, a little bit of work on our side. So, but what's, what's nice about this is what, what I learned on the, on the Wall Street side was that you take a certain company, you benchmark the companies within your sector, and then you compare it, how am I doing versus IBM? How am I doing versus Apple? How am I doing versus HP? I know it's, it's, it can't really be like that because it deals with human nature and, and our education of our kids and taxpayer money. But it's, it's interesting to, to understand it a little bit better.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Otidy? All right, well, thank you for that report then. And I'll turn down to the other end of the counter here, and Mr. Waters.
Okay. So I attended the same, same conference, but we went to a couple different classes, or one different class. He did the money part. And there's a few key points that I liked in just my whole experience there. And one of the things that I really liked were community values, talk about community values. And what I liked about that is we have to look at what's important to the community that we serve. We have all these different ideas, hopes, dreams, values. But it's very important to understand what the values are of the community because it kind of opens that door for us to educate our teachers, administrators, as to how to better reach the communities we serve. If we put our own stuff, all of our stuff out there, and we're not looking at what, you know, these parents' values are, what they want their children to learn, it could be construed as, you know, these outsiders just coming in, just trying to say, this is how it is, and that's that. So that was something I took from there. When we, when we all got elected to the board, we all had different things that we thought were great for the district. And again, as we move forward, it's, it's always important for us to ask ourselves before we're going on and saying, hey, this is what we want to do, we have to look at, is this what we want to do, or is this about the students and the families? So it was something that, I don't know what it was exactly, but it just kind of was an aha moment, and I just jotted some things down and figured out, talk about that when we got here. Another one that was big, and I can, I'll be the first to say, I fall prey to this in just parenting, right? Generation. Are we attempting to govern based on beliefs and values of our generation? And if we are, we probably need to check that. Because it's probably, it might not be a bad thing, but if their values are different and we don't attempt to understand their values, you know, we're going to be met with resistance. So that's, that was a big one. And we actually did a drill that are really, I thought was powerful. And I think some of you guys might have recognized this or not, but they had different decades, 50s to 60s, 60s to 70s, 70s to 80s, 80s to 90s, 90s, 2000, 2000, 2010. And they had us go stand where we were represented. And it was interesting because there was, for, for my generation, which was 90s to 2000, there was three of us. And 2000 to 2010, there was two. Now, the other side of the room, there was a whole lot of folks. Now, the other side of the room, there was a whole lot of folks. There was a lot of old folks over there. When I say old, that's a compliment, so just understand.
Sure.
But really, I was like, wow. It, it, it was telling. So, when we had a lot of the people who were older, and they were, they would talk about the values that they had and how they implemented these values, and when they were met with resistance. Okay, aha, this is why, because there's a generation gap. So, it's just, it's important to understand where, where our constituents are, and where the families are. So, it was, it was eye-opening for me, and again, I fall victim to that, because it's, it's just new. Things moved from the 80s to the 90s, things started to move fast, then in the 90s, it moved faster, and then, it just went at light speed from 2000 to 2010. So, we're constantly learning. Let me see, another thing, community involvement. Ask a question, what are we doing to involve the community in, in education? And something that I can say that, that I've done recently, and I met with Mr. Valenti and Councilman Mike Mignola, we're looking at getting the community physically fit, and somehow having some kind of activity to where the community can come and bring the kids, and kind of pull in that way. Going to, you know, I'm, I'm still, we're still brainstorming how to do that, but, you know, physical fitness is one way of doing it. So, I am going to do everything in my power to make it tomorrow night, because I want to promote physical fitness. Yeah, you know, kid there as well. So, but it's important to have community involvement in whatever way, whatever talents you guys bring, help bring some more, get parents involved, get community involved, that's going to help with fundraising. It just, it's a, it can only help. The last couple of things I want to talk about is more for the board, and I just want to challenge everybody, between now and the next time we meet, is jot down three things that you feel are, are working well about the school district. And also, jot down three things that we could probably use work on for the, between now and upcoming year. Nine times out of 10, I believe there probably going to be five different things, or we're all going to have different things down there, which is great, because then we can really brainstorm and talk about how we're going to address each and every one of those. But it's important to look at what's working as well. You know, notice I said that first. What do we agree on? And let's, let's, let's start there. So, that's it. I, I, I enjoy it myself. I had fun. Any questions? Comments? No?
I was just struck by what you were talking about with the generations and that change, because I was also thinking about, for many of us, especially if we had our children a little later, there's, there's a gap between that we lost in there. And for me, it really was the, the 90s, where I lost track of what was going on in schools, you know, and then suddenly come, up comes 2001, and I'm like, this doesn't look like school as I was last engaged with school, you know? And so, that, that is something that, that we have to be kind of aware, that things, things go on changing even while we're off doing something else. Just, so that was, that was an interesting point, thanks.
What was discussed doesn't just relate to education. It's just that things throughout the generations change in every way, but it's good that you, you can pull it into the focus on education, but that's what the whole thing is. Each generation is just a little different than 10 years before, or, you know?
Communication itself.
I mean, a lot, I guess, but I mean, you, you talk to someone that's back, you know, their 80s or something, they have tons of things to say that, oh, my gosh, you know? And then you talk to someone from another generation. So, yeah, there is a big change, and it's going to affect everything in your life.
How many teachers we have in here?
A bunch of them just left.
Just left? Okay, okay, okay.
A few of them, thanks.
Went home to...
I mean, I got a question. You guys don't see it as much, probably, because...
Oh, no, they don't.
In the elementary schools, in middle schools and high schools for that matter, a lot of times, phones are as we put away. So, at the college level, for example, I'm teaching, and students can constantly fact-check me by going on Google or something.
Hell, yeah.
And trying to figure it out. So, we have to teach in a different way now. And this is just from when I started teaching in 2005 until now. There's, it's, the approach is different, and it's not just the students are looking at us for all the answers. Now, it's kind of facilitating, helping them think a little better. So, it's, the game has changed, and we have to change with the game in order to stay in the game.
I was just about to say.
Exactly.
Did we count on our fingers before, right? Now we have computers?
Still do.
I said, we used to count on our fingers before, now we use computers?
Apicus.
Oh, you still do?
I like apicus, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Waters.
I was interested, who was your speaker?
I don't remember.
No, no, I mean, I should say, what field was that person in? Just curious.
I don't remember.
Oh, okay.
Old age, memory.
He's having that problem, the rest of us are doing it.
How old were they?
You got your phone, you can look it up later, huh?
I know.
Turns out it's in front of that pamphlet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
Do we have, then, any additional board member comments, reports, committee meetings, boards?
Something I was trying to remember to say.
Anything, Mr. Waters?
That was something I was trying to remember it was.
We'll come back to you, maybe it'll come...
Yeah, maybe.
Either of you gentlemen have?
Oh, yeah, I did.
No, no.
Okay. So, it came back to you roughly fast?
Yeah, I, I received some notices, because I get these police, police alerts from the police departments, and so, both Daly City Police, as well as Broadmoor Police, I'm sure Colma also, but Colma has less, less people alive than dead, but, you know. So, of the two police departments, they're saying that there's, in the last couple of weeks, there's been an uprising on home invasions and home robberies. And so, everybody should really pay very much attention to what might be happening in the area, because sometimes something you can see would help if, if something is found out later. So, not that it's a huge thing, but more than they've been experiencing. So, they said, just put the word out there.
There's more in the Broadmoor area?
Broad, there's...
Daly City, yeah.
Daly City and Broadmoor Post.
Okay.
But I heard from Broadmoor, and I heard from the Daly City Police. So, they're trying to work together now, along, also with Colma Police Department, and they're going to be, there's ways that you're going to be able to go on the internet and receive those reports, so you'll know, oh, my gosh, down the street, this happened. But just so that you're aware, when you see somebody that looks like they don't belong in the neighborhood, or a car that's parked out there, pay attention to it, because it might be a way for the police to be able to, to locate these people. And, and just beware, lock your house. Take care of watching your house.
Thank you. The case, I have no cards with anybody waiting to address the board. Then we will close the open session in memory of Linda Garcia, the campus supervisor at Ben Franklin. She'd been there for over 20 years, passed away last weekend. And so, if we could just have a moment of silence for Linda Garcia. Okay, we will recess for five minutes and reconvene in closed session.